We'll call this meeting to order. We'll move to discussion items. Administrator report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming out on a Packer Monday night. We've got a few things to go over at this special board meeting. The first is our community survey results. Darren Severs from School Perceptions is here to present the findings of the results. So I will turn it over to Darren.
Thanks, everyone. Yeah, my name is Darren Severs. A little background. I've worked for School Perceptions for two years, but I can very much relate to where you're coming from tonight because I worked for the Slinger School District for 27. Elementary principal, high school principal in the last nine years, superintendent. So we were customers of School Perceptions, went through this identical process that you're going through right now for a referendum back in 2017. And so just two years ago, I joined the School Perceptions team. I needed some more mobility. My mother's health is failing in Minnesota. This just allows me to be more flexible than being a superintendent where I need to be around the district on a daily basis. So I'm very prideful about this process because it worked for us in Slinger. And now I'm on the other side of the table trying to help districts go through the same process and be a conduit between you and your community on what they want their schools to look like and how much they're willing to support. So I've got your summary report for you tonight. The table of contents will be as follows. Any slide that's blue will just be background information. Any slide that's yellowish-orange will be information about who responded to the survey. And then the most important slides that you're probably most curious about tonight are the green slides. Those are your results. And at the end, I'll have a wrap-up and take any questions that you have from the board level. Briefly about our company. We've been in place, we've been existence for 21 years. We've done over 10,000 staff, parent, students, and community surveys for improvement. And we're just about to cross the 1,000 district line for districts. We've helped navigate strategic planning and the referendum process. And we've done projects in all 50 states. Now to the Algoma results. Your survey, as you recall, closed on November 20th. You had 476 total respondents for a response rate of 19%. And within 476 responses, you'll have a margin for error of plus or minus 4.5%. So when I talk later on about our projections of support, that's plus or minus 4.5%. As your number of responses go up, we just did a district this fall with 2,000 respondents. Well, they're more towards the 2% margin for error. But with a smaller community, smaller district like yours, there is a bit more of a margin for error. If you're wondering how your response rates compares to other districts, our company average over the history of the company is 17%. So that's a very good response rate, above average, for sure. As far as who responded to your survey, we break it out by age on this first slide. What we look for right away is a couple of age groups. 35 to 44 typically represents your parents. And you had a nice strong result there. Another age group that we look for are the 65-plus. That tends to be your retirees, your senior citizens that live in the community. And we're sensitive to how they feel very much because they're on a fixed income and they're regular voters. And so they have a very good pulse for what the community support is because they go to the polls and vote very reliably. Our 18- to 24-year-olds don't respond so much because they're just trying to figure out where their life is going. As far as resident response, 94% of the survey respondents reported being residents. Now, we mailed this to every resident on our Every Door Direct mailing list. But 6% of them reported being non-residents. And that group includes staff that responded because we sent every staff member a survey because we're weighing in on their working conditions. Those are staff members that don't live in the district. Those would be open enrollment parents, parents that bring their kids to Algoma but don't reside in the district. So they can't vote. And then also maybe some property owners, second property. They don't reside here, but the owner property and had a survey delivered to that property. Going forward, as we talk about projections of support, we'll only be talking about the 94% that can vote on any potential action the board decides to take. As far as municipalities, this was your breakdown of municipalities, largely the city of Algoma and a descending populace from there. Talking to Jesse said that this is very representative of the population in the school district as well. So you had representation from all of your municipalities, which is nice to see. Next slide shows you as far as distribution of respondents by parent and employee. The graphic to your left on the screen, 17% of survey respondents reported being employees of the district. 37% reported being parents of the district. Next slide, and this is a very helpful slide for regardless of what you decide to do as a result of this study. We asked the question, "How do you like to receive information from the school district?" And this is critical because this tells you how you can get back to them on potential next steps. The light blue graphic is the parents' responses, largely. They'd like the convenience of an email, but they also look forward to a district newsletter and they go to the website and to a lesser extent, phone notifications. Those are probably, they're probably referencing decisions about snow-related, early morning decisions when it comes to phone notifications. The purple group, the non-parents, non-staff, they reported largely counting on those school district newsletters, 86%. And the Kiwanis News is the second most-read resource when it comes to finding out what's going on at the school district. So that's good information for you regardless of what you decide to do. If you're going to get back to the community, non-parents, non-staff will be looking for a newsletter and a report in the paper. These next several slides you've seen before. They're screenshots of the survey. But we go back to the beginning of the survey process and remind you of the pages of the survey to put the survey in context. We did some financial background to inform the community about where things are with the mill rate. And then we did inform them of where the Algoma mill rate stands in comparison to other districts in the region, just to provide them some context. And then we gave them some facility background, talked about some of the building needs, age of the building, safety and security needs, classroom support area needs, outdoor facility needs, and building infrastructure needs. And then based on those needs, we always start our surveys, almost always start our surveys with the general question of, "Would you support the district looking into or pursuing a referendum?" And we look for a response based on that general question before we start talking money. The reason we ask that question before we start talking finance is we just want to take a pulse for the community. Would they support anything? If the answer out of the gate is no, don't pursue any referendum, then you know right away that it's not even worth talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars because they just aren't ready for you to go to a referendum any way, shape, or form. As you can tell, that was not the case in Algoma. There's big support for looking into addressing those facility needs in some manner. Just a matter of how far they're willing to go. And so that's where the accompanying pages come in. By the way, as I talk about this slide, one behind-the-scenes metric that'll be very important for the board to be aware of as we go forward are the composition of these groups in the community. Staff make up less than 1% of your voters. We asked them, and they're very supportive of pursuing a referendum at a 91% rate. We asked them because these are the working conditions and they're inside the schools every day serving the children. And quite honestly, we want to have nice schools and facilities for our employees because we value them. And quite honestly, retention is getting harder and harder for school districts. Talent pools are getting shallower and we want to have good facilities where they feel safe. And, but they only represent 1% of voters. The light blue bar are your parents. They represent 25% of voters. And then the purple bar, those are the non-parents, non-staff. So they don't really have any daily connection to the school. They make up 75% of voters. Very important for you to keep those percentages in mind because later on, when we give our projections, as you saw earlier, 37% of survey respondents were parents, but they make up 25% of voters. So we have to do some weighting and correcting to give you accurate projections of support based on those things. And again, staff, while we value their opinion, they're less than 1%. So they don't really move the needle at the polls. It's those other two groups, the parents and the non-parents, non-staff, that are three-quarters of Algoma. So let's talk about the recommended base plan. The board surveyed the community about a base plan that did some scope at the elementary school, leaking roofs and some piping, and some scope at the high school, secure entrance, band choir, ag science, et cetera. And then also some district-wide work. And then we asked the question, "Would you support a $10.05 million referendum for the base plan that was shown on the previous slides?" Again, as you can see, 91% support from the staff on that base plan. 7% undecided, 2% against. Now the two most impactful slides when it comes to our projections of support. 78% of parents were supportive of that base plan. 10% against and 12% undecided. And the non-parents, non-staff, 66% support, 22% against, and 12% undecided. So what we do is, as I talked earlier about our weighting, this next slide will weight those slides and give you a projection of support. So as you can see, what we do is we take that 78% support level from parents and weight it at .25. 25% of your voters are parents. And then we take that 66% support amongst the non-parents, non-staff and weight it at .75 to give a projection. You have six, right now, our projection would be 69% support if you move forward with the base plan at $10.05 million. Any questions about how I arrived at that projected number? Then we'll go forward. There were some additional projects that we did ask the community about. There's the bus garage project. And that was $750,000. Staff support was at 61%. Parent support was at 58%. And non-parent, non-staff was at 38%. 48% against. So again, using that same formula, if we project the support for the bus garage project, that would land at 43%. And then we also had an athletic additional project for $600,000. Would you support expanding our referendum by $600,000 to build an indoor practice facility and restrooms? Staff, 61% support. Parents, 54%. Non-parents, non-staff, 31%. And a slight increase in no votes for the athletic project. And that projected out at 36.75% support. Which is not entirely surprising. We have roughly 47 projects where we've outed in this fall. And those that have had discretionary athletic projects, athletics has had a tough time this fall as people have to make tough financial choices about what to do for their school districts. Athletics is testing very poorly at this time. And I think it's a state-of-the-economy in the tough, tough inflationary times everyone's experiencing. We did also ask a general question, not so unlike the initial question where we asked, "Would you support a referendum?", we asked, "Would you support the district studying the idea of relocating a football field to the high school?" 46% said yes, they would support the idea of exploring it. 36% no, 19% not sure. And then the following slide gives you a bit of a distribution, just so you can see where the support landed. Not overwhelming support, but definitely support for the study. You know, no money's attached to this, but definitely something the community is telling you we're taking a look at. When we study, do a study like this for districts, we also engage the community on just giving the school board and district leaders like Jesse and the principals feedback on how things are going in the district. And we always ask four basic questions. Can you tell us how the district is doing in the four areas? Delivering a high-quality education, keeping the public informed, managing funds, and building pride in the community? We ask them on a scale of 1 to 4 with a median of 2.5. So now you can see on this graphic how each of the three different groups feel things are going in the district. We're always looking for anything that can be north of 2.5 for sure and as close to 3 as possible. That gets you into a good and ideally crossing over 3 towards the great score. 3's and 4 is ideally, but inching towards 3 wherever possible. As you can see, staff are feeling quite good about things. Parents, there's a bit of a slightly lower score there. And not too far below that score are non-parents, non-staff. To give you some context, combining all the data, like we've done for all the other slides, this slide shows you the combination of all the respondents. So 3 out of 4 are giving you a good or a great score on delivering a high-quality education for an average of 2.93. Keeping the public informed also, nearly 3 out of 4 for an average of 2.84. Managing funds appropriately, typically far and away the lowest scoring of the four areas for a district, right there with the other areas, 72% and a 2.84. And your strongest area, community pride. And I have to say, I kind of feel it as I came in the wrong door and walked by the gym. There's just a little bit of buzz down there about the game that's about to come up and need to feel the pride in Algoma. So our closing question on a scale of 0 to 10, we always ask on our community surveys, on a scale of 0 to 10, how likely would you be to recommend the district to a friend or family member? And this is a powerful graphic because this rating scale typically correlates very closely with referendum success. If they're feeling good about the district, they're more inclined to invest in the school district and allow a referendum to have support. If they're upset about something and the score is very low, they're less inclined. So the satisfaction metric is a very powerful one. Our average of all the districts where we've asked this, and again, we've done this hundreds of times, is 7.09. Algoma came in 6.79. But I wanted to just point out to the board, what was interesting about this is really there isn't a big population in the 4, 3, 2, and 1 range. You see the 2%, 3%, 2, 2, 2, all the way down the line. So that tells you there's not a big population out there that is upset about something. 22% are just neutral significantly. 4 are against, they just don't really have an opinion. But then if you look at how top-heavy this graphic is, 15% give you a 10, 11% a 9. So the 7 through 10 scores makes up a large percentage of your respondents. So very top-heavy, which is good to see and is a sign of strength. Your average is being hurt by how many people just are right in that middle because that was the highest scoring. So we always wrap up with a "What did we learn?" slide and try to summarize our findings. So what we learned is if held today, the community would likely support a $10.05 million referendum on the base line. You know, 69% support, even with the margin of error plus or minus that 4.5%, you're still comfortably in the support range. If held today, the community would not likely support expanding the referendum to include the bus garage or indoor practice facility and restroom projects, not at this time. And then our third takeaway, respondents support exploring a plan to relocate the football field to the high school at some point in the future. So are there any questions from the board on our survey findings?
On the how is the district doing in each of the following areas? Is there, do you have an average on that as far as comparing Algoma to other schools? I mean, what is, what is normal, what is the average?
Yeah, I would tell you, your, you know, I would say your average is in the upper tubes. 3, anything in the 3 range would be above average. So you're right in that average range.
Okay.
Not so unlike the 0 to 10 scale hovering right around that average. Yeah, good question. Thank you.
I remember sitting at the meeting saying some of these little numbers surprised me. And I, and I, that tells me that we need to do a better job of marketing what's going in our district. Because for a district our size to have three avenues for your kids to learn, tell me another district that hasn't. So we don't do enough marketing to get the word out.
And Pat, that's again why we ask that communication question sometimes boards through this process. And I was guilty of that in my school district when we were debating safety improvements and controversial performing arts center auditorium because all of our concerts weren't at gym. You had the camp that said, "No way, no how", and the camp that said, "How dare you not done this 10 years ago." So we surveyed and we found out we just got, we had to do a better job communicating. And that graphic told us how. They're looking for newsletters from Jesse, who by the way, has been amazing this whole process. He's been a conduit between his committee and on behalf of you as a board. Absolutely enjoyed Jesse's hard, he worked so hard behind the scenes to get the survey just right with our team trying to write this survey and get it launched. And so it's been a pleasure. But communication, now you know exactly how to get in touch with them, how they want to hear from you. Local papers aren't that well-read, but clearly our local paper is.
The older community and they're not really computer savvy. So you may go back to your fashion, we have communication, which is your newspaper.
Right. And to your point, I showed you that 35% of respondents were 65-plus. I did look at your census data to do a little deeper dive. 23% of voters are 65-plus. So they responded like the parents did. They're overrepresented in your data, just like the parents where they're really are paying attention to what you're talking about doing here. Just got to get back in touch with them and tell them what the next steps are. So good point, Pat.
Well, this could be some really good information.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darren.
You're welcome.
We are going to transition to, thank you.
We're starting to switch you, we're going to have on the agenda, number 3 under A before number 2.
So we're going to switch over to the yellow presentation that the board members have along with the two documents that were behind it. So the one with the yellow boxes and then the blue boxes. So what I'd like to go over is the work that's been done over the last couple of months by our community advisory committee. We have a final report that we have put together in collaboration with our three board members that are part of this committee or the subcommittee. And that would be Lonnie, Fendel, Chrisly, and Pat Bowman. So three, you feel free to interject if I am missing anything as well. So a little background around the community advisory committee or CAC group. It was formed back in August. We had asked for the public to be part of this. And we had representation of about 35 members made up of parents, community members, business owners, local elected officials. We had our three school board members and we also had a handful of staff members as part of this group. Throughout the couple of months, we had met four times. We looked at five different learning topics that we focused on. So our first meeting was on September 11th and we reviewed the facility study. Our second meeting was on September 18th. We looked at community access to our buildings and our current learning environments. And then on September 28th, we looked at safety and security of our buildings and the complex school finance. And then our last meeting was held last Thursday, December 7th. We looked at the survey results that you were just presented on. And the committee made some final recommendations and guidance to the board. And that's what I'll be going over. I want to acknowledge the CAC members that took time out of their busy schedules to be part of this group. Have them listed here on the screen, so a big thank you to all of them. I want to talk a little bit about the charge that we gave them. And it was to serve as an advisory capacity to the administration and to you as the Board of Education. So the CAC supported the district's efforts to explore facilities, their needs and our potential solutions that would best provide the necessary environments and space for our students, our community stakeholders, and recognizing the need for solutions that are flexible and fiscally responsible. Along with that, we kept in mind the vision of the district and the benefits to all of our stakeholders. We had some guiding principles that we held ourselves to. And they were to enhance the educational opportunities, maximize our resources to advance student outcomes, to provide a healthy, safe, secure, and accessible environment to all of our students and our staff, and then to ensure our buildings align with our community needs. I want to talk a little bit about the five learning topics. So you have a brief overview of what was covered during our CAC meetings. First one again was to review the facility study that McKinstry had completed. You got to see this back in July. So the categories included educational remodel, locker and storage needs, track resurfacing, parking lot replacement at the middle school and high school, safety and security upgrades, building maintenance and upgrades, performing arts center upgrades, flexible learning spaces, energy efficiency, and the playground resurfacing at the elementary. These all align with what was in the community survey as well. So you can see the pattern that we stuck with based off of the facility study. Learning topic number two was community access and input to our district facilities. We have some wonderful facilities here in Algoma that are used far beyond just our students and our staff. That includes our wellness center, our PAC, performing arts center, our field house, cafeterias, athletic fields. There's always something going on here at night or sometimes on the weekends, so. Third learning topic was our learning environments. We tried to get the CAC members to understand what is currently being done in our classrooms as far as furniture and storage. And so you can see on the screen some pictures from the elementary school and some here at the middle school and high school. The rooms that are pictured here are some of the updated or upgraded classrooms that have newer furniture. Learning topic number four was safety and security. So trying to understand what's currently in place with keeping our students and staff safe. That included cameras, fob access to our doors, both interior and some exterior doors, putting some protective window film that was a donation at the elementary school, along with lots of other safety measures that we currently have in place. Learning topic number five was school finance. And this was our last meeting. And we purposely left it to the last meeting because it's such a large topic that we did not want this to overwhelm the work that the committee was doing throughout the three times in September. Kevin Mullen from Baird came and presented on the equalized value, the mill rate, and how districts can levy based off of referendums, so. The CAC final guidance, so we had the CAC members do a rating. And you will see this, the yellow document, so the document that looks like this was done on September 28th. We had them rate the proposed projects as high, medium, and low priority areas. As you can see, many of them on the first page came in the high category. As we got to the As we got to the second page, there was a shift in more to the low and medium areas. We then had the CAC members do this activity again at our last meeting in December, the last Thursday, and we had them rate high, medium, and low, just as a comparison, to see where they were at after some time, to digest the information, have some conversation with community members, and to see the survey. So these projects were, again, the same as what was listed in the community survey. Uh, the results from the CAC group showed that there is support for that base plan. Just as this community survey showed, that $10.05 million is supported based off of the projects that are part of this plan. There was mixed support for the bus garage and mixed support for the indoor softball and baseball practice facility. So of the base plan, um, the items that were supported at the last meeting included educational remodel, track resurfacing, parking lot replacement at the middle school and high school, safety and security upgrades, building maintenance upgrades, performing arts center upgrades, energy efficiency, and the playground resurfacing at the elementary school. What was not well supported by the CAC group was the locker and storage remodel, so including the wellness center, as well as flexible learning spaces. So that included furniture and storage in classrooms. When looking at the bus garage, um, this came in as a medium support by the group, the CAC group. And looking at the indoor softball and baseball practice facility, this also came in as medium support. The athletic field came in as a low support area by the group. So in summary, based off of the CAC feedback, the referendum subcommittee, and I'm speaking for the three board members here because we met at the, after the group met on December 7th, so last Thursday. Um, the referendum subcommittee for the school board is recommending the full board consider the base plan of $10.05 million as part of the spring 2024 referendum. Um, we are requesting that a draft of the referendum resolution be created by our bond council and that would be shared then at our board meeting on December 18th, next Monday. The timeline moving forward, so we have the December 18th meeting, which is next Monday. Um, if the board decides to move forward, we will have a draft of that resolution ready for you. And then January 8th, we have a special board meeting and that is when you would be voting on the referendum resolution. Uh, there is a deadline of January 22nd, um, for state law to submit any resolutions for a, a spring referendum. So keep that in mind on those dates. And then just for the community, um, just so you know, we will continue to be posting all of this information on our district website and that's at algomawolves.org slash facility planning. So feel free to go out there and take a look at all the documents. We'll be continuing to add some documents as we go through the process, so. If you want to take a moment and thank again all of our community advisory committee members. Um, they were an instrumental part in all of this work and I told them this last Thursday, but it bears repeating. Um, their input, their guidance is really gonna help shape the future of our school district and the education of our students for many, many years to come, so. You have any questions for me?
No, it sounds like the group had some pretty good consensus on things and gives us a, a pretty solid idea of where to go. That was your opinion as to.
Yep.
Board members have anything to add?
Pretty much said it all, Jesse.
Some of the other things that were on there can always be relooked at in the future and, um, reassess the interest and the needs of maybe other funding initiatives.
Correct.
Yeah. Because, you know, medium interest doesn't mean no interest.
Like Jesse said at the meeting, you don't want to tank the referendum totally for just a couple of items.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Based on, based on what the voters said, or what the survey said, excuse me.
Yep, and I think there's also something for when we do a survey, we should honor the survey results. And the people would want us to do that.
Yeah, one metric I typically will quote and that maybe is timely given where your discussion is, is our, when I first took this position, I had super dense teeth, me, you're going to work for that company that sells referendums. I said, well, we're not selling referendums, we're educating them about referendums on behalf of boards. And our, if you're wondering what our reliability metric is, across that nearly thousand projects we've done, we're at 94% predictive with our data. Doesn't mean it's 94% pass rate, it means if you, if boards act on the data they receive, there's a 94% pass rate on what the data says. But it also means that if they don't listen to the data, and we've had some districts say, oh, we're not so sure. We're gonna ask for an extra 10 million. We've been right 94% of the time, but that would go down in flames too. So the data is very indicative of how your community feels and we, we always urge our, our educational partners, just listen to your data. You asked a question.
Right, yeah, and the people that took the time to give us their input, we have to respect that.
That's, yeah, that's what you're doing.
I'll just add that Amber was so instrumental in, I mean, she only been here for a short time, but, um, she's so instrumental in answering questions on finances, um, especially from the, from the community members that were there that, because you, you all know that school finance is difficult to understand and she was just wonderful.
Thank you, Amber. Yeah, it's definitely.
Oh, yes.
All right.
All right.
Finished then?
I am finished, so.
Eric from McKinstry.
Again, I work with McKinstry. Again, thank you for the opportunity to work with, um, Jesse. I do want to piggyback off of what Darren shared. You really do have an excellent superintendent. He is very thoughtful, very thorough, he's been a pleasure to work with. Um, I think our hair color can attest that we know a lot of superintendents, we know a lot of, and, you know, we, we've experienced lots of different superintendents on the spectrum and you have a good one, so.
This is my COVID hair.
Mine too. But wanted to share that because he really has been a pleasure to work with. And the community advisory committee, again, very thoughtful, lots of great questions, um, lots of, uh, you know, sharing of good information and perspective, so that was, that was really helpful. Um, what I wanted to do this evening was, you know, fortunately, unfortunately, it depends on how you want to look at it. There's still a lot of work ahead. I know that you'll be considering a resolution or a referendum. Um, if you decide to move forward with that resolution, the, the work doesn't stop. There's an informational campaign that districts, um, I don't, I don't know any districts that don't move forward with an informational campaign if they have a referendum ballot question. Um, so that's something that, uh, you'll have to consider and will add to Jesse's, you know, overflowing plate, but certainly we'll, we'll support him in that. So what I wanted to do, and that thought would be helpful, would be to talk about kind of the do's and don'ts around referendums. Um, I want to be clear, I was a former superintendent, I'm not your legal counsel, I'm not, uh, a lawyer. Um, so what I'm sharing is really more from my past experience, um, WASB resources that have, um, that you can rarely access and then kind of my understanding of, um, the do's and don'ts of referendums. If you do have questions, I would strongly encourage you to direct those to Jesse, who then would reach out to your legal counsel or WASB legal counsel to, you know, if there's specific scenarios that you're really kind of questioning about, um, that's what I would recommend doing. Um, I'm just kind of giving you some high level overviews of my understanding of things that you really should try to, lanes you should stay in and things you should try to avoid. So the big one is around the use of district funds. You know, you absolutely can use district funds, I should be careful, absolutely. You, you can use district funds, because I, right, I said that I'm not giving legal counsel. Uh, you can use district funds for an informational campaign. Um, and really you have to just be careful around what looks like advocacy and what is just pushing out information, facts, data, resources for your public, your constituents, to be educated about what's on the ballot, to get a better understanding so that when they go into that ballot booth, they know what they're, what they're voting for or against. Um, so it's really important to kind of distinguish between what's an informational campaign and what is advocacy. So you can use district funds for, uh, to inform the voters. Um, what's the tax impact, right? That's, that's probably gonna be good factual information from Baird. Your financial advisor will help you put that together and share. What's the actual tax impact on a hundred thousand dollar property, a $200,000 property, however you may want to represent it? Um, what, what are the actual, uh, projects that are going to be, um, done? The areas it's going to impact or the curriculum or instructional programming that it might impact? So really being able to share that information in a really neutral way, just real, you know, straightforward way. So you can use, uh, funds for those informational materials. You really want to avoid advocacy and the best way to do that is really being thoughtful about the types of words that you use, right? The difference between informational and advocacy is you might have words like vote on April 10th, um, remember to vote, those are informational, you're just reminding them the date of the election. Words you want to avoid, avoid for is like vote for the referendum or, um, vote against or defeat or reject. Those are the kind of words you really want to avoid and those start to really look more like advocacy. If you have a yes or no committee in this that, you know, kind of create, uh, pops up, those folks are free to use those types of words, but using district funds on materials that have those kind of words are really, would be discouraged. Um, your network, your website, great places, Jesse mentioned, more of that information is gonna continue to be shared on your website. Good use of your website and your technology. Um, but again, if there is a vote yes or vote no, those things can't be posted on your website or use of your technology to push out emails to your residents or your parents. Any questions around district funds, its use? District roles, now this is probably, this is always a, a challenging one because it oftentimes can feel or look kind of gray. Board members, obviously you never lose your right to be a citizen of, uh, the Algoa community. You just have to be really clear that when you're speaking about the referendum, I mean, you're expressing a personal view, you're doing that as a private citizen. Um, you know, again, as a reminder, right, one board member, um, is really a private citizen. It's not until all seven of you are together that you are the school board and can act in and really have the authority of, of the school board. A single board member doesn't have the authority of the school board. So just kind of being mindful of that, if you, if you decide to participate in, um, a community committee, you absolutely have the right to do so, but just being clear that you're not there as a representative of, of the board. You're there as Lonnie, or Chrissy, or Chris, you know, at whatever address as part of this community. Um, you never lose that right, obviously, to do that. Um, so just making sure that you, you state that. If you ever have a question around like how you might want to represent, uh, opinion or perspective, ask Jesse and if he's not comfortable with giving you a response in that moment, reaching out to legal counsel. You know, WASB will be happy, their legal counsel will be happy to give you a response pretty quickly. Um, administration and staff, I will say that administrators, it's a little more limited. Again, similarly to board members, you don't lose your, your First Amendment right to, to express free speech as a citizen, but, um, uh, if you're wearing, you know, Jesse's wearing that hat as superintendent, he's gotta be very careful. And really, his, his best, um, lane to stay in, as well as I'd recommend for administrators, really is to stay in that informational. Answer questions, provide facts, provide responses to questions, but avoid things that look, that could potentially look like advocacy. Similarly, for all of your staff, both your teaching and your classified staff, um, really it's good for them to, uh, people in the community will go to them and ask them questions. They should feel comfortable to answer those questions. Um, part of the informational campaign is to arm your staff with the right information or be able to direct residents as to where they can find information. But if they're, you know, um, out to the Friday fish fry and they run into some friends and neighbors and they ask their opinion, they're, they're welcome to share their opinion of the referendum. But again, just trying to, you know, and Jesse will remind staff that they have to just be really clear about delineating that line between an employee and resident. Any questions about district roles? And then finally, um, if a committee forms, um, they should register with the clerk, especially if they're gonna be using funds to buy signs or emotional materials. They really should be registering with the clerk, um, otherwise it could be potentially in violation of Wisconsin statute. The district has an obligation to provide them information if requested and asked. So, you know, if there's a yes group or a no group and they want something, they should direct it to Jesse. Um, if they come to you asking for that, you should direct it to Jesse and Jesse can then gather that information for them. You know, if it's around a tax question, tax clarification, or a list of what the project looks like. But again, as far as, uh, any financial support of either of those groups, any of those groups shouldn't do that. Um, or should the district be creating materials for them? Just, again, just drawing that really fine line between informational and advocacy. But I can tell you that, uh, the informational campaign is as much of a lift as what has already been done because it's really important to make sure your community is well informed and educated about what's included in the referendum and especially the tax impact. I can say that that, that was a, a pretty common theme amongst the number of the, um, CAC members just to make sure that the district does a really good job of pushing out information about the tax impact with a approved referendum, um, as well as probably, you know, what are, what are the consequences or results if the referendum does include it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I, I mean, that's informational.
Yep.
What happens if it does not bill, then, you know, then what is our plan?
Right, uh, you know, so some districts will do an operational referendum and those dollars might support a specific program. It's, it's not advocacy to say this program would have to be eliminated or reduced funding wise without that operational referendum. You know, that, that's, that's going to be a loss to curriculum and programming, it's factual. So I'm, I'm sure that as an example. Any questions about kind of the potential next phase with a, um, passed resolution? Put a question on the next table.
In terms of informational sessions that I think we would want to probably do, obviously closer, if, again, we decide to move forward with the referendum, is, um, what, what kind of timeframes do you recommend if, if we would be looking at a spring, April referendum?
Right, there's that real delicate balance of like getting too much information out too early. Um, so really, January, good chunk of February will be gearing up for the informational campaign. I probably would not recommend, you know, starting that campaign until end of February, end of March because you really want that information to be front and center, relevant to your voters as they go into the ballot box in April, so. That being said, even though, you know, Jesse, your information's not getting pushed out until that point, there's a lot of work to be done to that.
And when we would do that, where the public would be invited in, um, there will be representatives from you and from Bayland and some of the other different.
Yeah, and we, we're absolutely prepared to support, um, the district and your, your informational campaigns. Whether it's, you know, uh, helping with some of the materials and putting together some of the information, um, or, you know, if Jesse's gonna be speaking to a, a group, making sure he has the materials and, uh, that he needs to do that.
By all means, use any slide, all the, that slide, I just, there's a patient to see, that's your, that's your PowerPoint.
Okay.
Quite honestly, if you look around this room, weren't a lot of people here to, to hear the findings tonight. So if you have some community listening sessions in February, a full slides up there and. and show the people how their community spoke to you. A lot of times, people have assumptions about what support is because they, that's how they feel, that's how their friends feel. They don't necessarily know what the community feels until they see that raw data.
Now, will there be like pictures that we could put up on the screen to show the public at meetings? Like, this is what we have planned for the auditorium, this is what we have planned for the bandroom.
Um, not really.
Because people, sometimes people are more visual than anything else.
I, yeah, and that's always a challenge because I know that, I mean, a lot of that really happens in the design phase. There, there's the possibility of sharing examples of what maybe other districts may have done that on a similar project. But I would really want to think about that because sometimes people latch on to something they see and think that's what's going to end up being the final deliverable. And, you know, a lot happens in the design phase. A lot of input needs to be gathered about, you know, in the CAC, lots of questions came out around very specific things. That, that gets worked out in the design phase. What you, you're doing is moving forward to make sure you can fund whatever scope falls within that design phase.
Yeah, I think we need to find the right balance of anything that we can visually represent, do it. And then try and be really clear with our written description of things that we can't. Any other questions? Any of ours? Please, Angela is here.
Well, I want to thank the committee, the subcommittee, for the work that you did. As I said, you know, it's, it's not over. It's in a sort of a old phase right now. And then, and if the board does go through with a resolution to do this, the work will start again. And that's where the COVID relations committee will also get to jump into action and sort of get the informational campaigns out there. So there's no action on it. Well, the recommendation would be that we, so to get the information for our next meeting.
Right.
Moving on to action items on this agenda. We are going to table this since it is on our agenda. But there is sort of no point in moving forward a bit now because Jesse was informed by the Department of Public Instruction that it is not going to be approved. So it would be a dispinning race to, to move forward with it, so. So we will not keep with that. But we do have one issue to deal with in close. So I would like a motion to go into executive session with the Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five subsection one EC. This applies.
Second.
Matt? By Matt, sent in by crispy, um, real cool, Chris?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.